I don't have any people here either, who knows?
What are you, what are you going to say, an audience party?
You're fine right there.
We're just gonna, for a meeting, we'll just come up. About the card someplace, maybe I'll blow my nuts.
Before the official meeting starts.
Okay. Well, we gotta get the card. It's right there!
Where? Sorry. So before the meeting starts.
Got your camera ready to go?
Oh, got you. It's the only thing you asked me to do.
All right, stand back for us.
I hope I don't break the camera.
What's that?
Maybe I'll stand out here. First of all, let me give you that to you.
You got your name played, it's very exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that you did.
Thank you.
And your name's right here. Is that all correct?
Thank you.
What you did. Let's try and do this.
All right, thank you.
You took that?
I got it, I took one. You guys look fine. All right. All right, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Bill.
Have a great summer.
Just set it on the table. It's.
You don't think I can do it on here? Nope. Right down there.
I have something to say.
Yes, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve the school board and serve our community. The superintendent teachers work, I make a huge effort to serve our schools. The improvements and efforts are a very positive step forward and I'm glad to be a part of it. Worked with over the past four years with the school with different board members has been a huge learning experience, an experience that I've enjoyed. I look forward to doing more positive work at the community. Again, thank you and good luck in upcoming school year.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
As always, very professional.
All right.
All right. All right, you guys have a good meeting.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes.
All right.
Good meeting.
Call this meeting order and we'll do the.
Okay.
That's right back here. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Superintendent slash secretary, would you want to do the roll?
I will do the roll, this is my first time driving. Okay. I'm gonna do attendance here, so Moto Johnson.
Here.
Katie Johnston.
Here.
Diana Mendoza, absent. Nikki Pettit, absent. Tyler Wilson, absent. John Brotherton.
Here.
And, this is gonna be interesting, so we don't have Robin in here, but Robin?
Here.
Robin is here, so we do have a quorum, I'll have to get this updated. So that means for votes, we should be, okay. Now we need to.
Action agenda corrections and modifications. Do they have a recommendation? I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda of removing and correcting items as presented.
Thank you. Second. Katie made a motion, I'll second it.
The motion was made by Katie.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Brotherton. And we need to do a vote. Moto, Mr. Johnson, excuse me, Board Member Johnson? Board Member Johnston?
Aye.
Vaughn? And Brotherton?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, save action.
Three, budget amending hearing public, comments hearing, all that good stuff.
We do not have any public tonight. So I will talk more about the budget amendment then during the regular part of the meeting.
Okay.
And so then we are on the motion to adjourn the budget amendment hearing.
I'll make the motion to adjourn the budget amending hearing.
I'll second.
Katie seconded.
Motion to adjourn can be a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye. Can you pose?
Motion carried. All right, now we're gonna call the order of the regular meetings.
Yes, regular meeting. Okay, call the order. We'll have to roll call, we'll let.
Uh, yes. Johnson?
Aye.
Johnston?
Here.
Mendoza, absent. Pettit, absent. Wilson, absent. Vaughn?
Here.
Brotherton?
Here. Six is action agenda, additional corrections and modifications, because we haven't, we had them getting this again.
We do it again, this is technically a separate meeting.
I'll make motion to approve the agenda of removing and correcting items as presented.
I'll second.
So the motion was made by Brotherton?
Seconded by Vaughn.
Seconded by Vaughn, who's not in here yet, so I'm gonna mark it as Katie, but we'll fix it later. All right.
Public comments.
Johnson? We have to take the vote, guys. Johnson? Yeah, yes, sir. Johnston? Vaughn?
Aye.
Brothers?
Aye.
Okay. Public comments.
Public comments. Eight, action consent agenda items, anything on that? We don't do any of that, right? I'll cast all that.
So within the consent agenda, we've got quite a few things, I did write description summaries for everything. One item I wanna highlight is letter D, donations and grants. So there is a new state pilot program for recruiting and retaining teachers in the profession. We just found out last week that we would be receiving $337,000 for that. We anticipate that that will be that amount annually for the next three years. So we are working already within our HR department and reaching out to some of our veteran teachers about how we might utilize that money. This is a rare occurrence with the state, because they're calling this maximum flexibility on it, which means we can spend it however the board determines we can spend it. So we are working on some plans for how we wanna spend that money. Usually grant money is tied to some very specific things that have to happen. Okay? And if, Mr. Hoag, if you could come up and have a seat, I was gonna introduce you as part of the personnel report before they vote. So you all met him before the meeting, I think actually Katie came in to visit Mr. Hoag. So I'm gonna read his bio here. Welcome to RCS, Mr. Charles Hoag, our new assistant principal at JW Ader. Charles has been the principal administrator at Circle Academy, which is part of the Cunningham Children's Home for the past 10 years. During that time, he served students with moderate to severe social, emotional, specialized needs. During his tenure, the school made a huge shift from delivering instruction in housing cottages to a new building in 2019. Before Charles became principal of Circle Academy, he served as a K-12 special education teacher, a regular education elementary teacher, and as a building and district level administrator. He earned his BA in elementary education from Lewis University in 1992, an MA in school administration from Governor's State University in 99, and an MA in special education in 2004. He lives in Champaign with his wife, they have three children, who I think are all gone.
Yes.
Mr. Hoag says, "I am excited to be joining the Ranhtul City School District's team of administrators as assistant principal at JW Ader Junior High. And I am looking forward to working with a great team of professionals who are motivated to make a positive difference in the lives of students, teachers, and families." So as soon as they vote, we'll say congratulations. All right, did anyone wanna say anything to Mr. Hoag other than congratulations?
Congratulations.
Nice to meet you, look forward to having you back in the future. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which has to be that long motion? To the top.
Okay, motion to approve the consent agenda items, including personal report, has submitted the stipulation that each individual is required to comply with all requirements for new hires as indicated in the Illinois statutes and RCS board policy and procedures, including ratification bills prepaid by the financial manager under board policy 4.50.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm gonna mark Katie, 'cause she's in the computer.
Okay.
Sorry, Robin. Next one's out of there.
Johnson?
Aye.
Katie Johnston?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
And Brotherton?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations, Mr. Hoag, thank you. Usually there's seven board members and we have an audience and.
But not this month.
But not this month, it's June, it's summer vacation, so you do not need to stay for the rest of the meeting, but do thank you for coming up for the work.
No, you gotta suffer. I'm just joking. Glad to see you.
It was nice to meet you.
Thank you.
All right, looking forward to it.
All right, we had no items removed from the consent agenda. Hannah really does a lot when she's here, is this, I cannot keep up with this. All right, I'll have to tell her that. Budget amendment.
Budget amendment.
For ten. Yes, so, the board is asked to amend the annual budget as needed. This is the second and final budget amendment for fiscal year, this is item number 10, for fiscal year 2023, excuse me. Relevant documents are included in the budget amendment hearing, public comments hearing, portion of this meeting. Document, fiscal year 23 amended budget line items shows the specific budget lines that are affected by this amendment. Overall, since our last budget amendment, the district has received $362,895 in new unbudgeted revenues, and is allocating $184,186, and will carry over $188,000. So again, this isn't the real budget, it's not the big budget, but anytime we have shifts in funds of a certain level, I think it's 10%, we have to do an amended budget. So this will be the last one, we'll be closing out fiscal year 23 now, and the audit starts in late July, early August for this year, so. Any discussion?
I'll make the motion to approve the fiscal year 23 amended budget as presented. Can I get a second?
I said.
Thank you.
All right, Johnson?
Aye.
Johnston?
Aye.
Wilson, excuse me, Vaughn?
Aye.
And Brothers, aye. Okay, thank you.
Number 11, action approval of.
Number, yep, here we go. We have two MOUs. The board is asked to enter into the same MOU with both the RCSEA and RCESPA. MOUs with our associations essentially represent temporary amendments to the collective bargaining agreement. These MOUs clarify that an employee on unpaid leave is also responsible for paying their full contribution, including the board's contribution for ancillary benefits such as medical, dental, and/or life insurance. So we're just clarifying procedure with this MOU.
Any questions? Okay, I'll make motion to approve the MOUs as presented. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Katie.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnston?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Brotherton?
Aye.
Motion carried.
12, action, commercial insurance selection approval.
Okay. The board is asked to approve the second lowest proposal from our commercial insurance bid. There is an attached letter in your packet explaining the bid and selection process. The recommendation is to approve the second lowest bid, which is ICRMT. ICRMT was the lowest bidder, and the district requested some additional coverage, which then technically made them be the second lowest bidder and the first lowest bidder, and the first low bid. So we are going with them as the low bidder, but with some additional coverage added.
Questions? I'll make the motion to approve the second lowest proposal through ICRMT. Can I get a second?
Aye.
Moto, second, thank you.
All right, I'll call her. Johnson?
Aye.
Johnston?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Brotherton?
Aye.
We voted everything that was supposed to be voted on.
Information items next, FOIA requests.
All right, so I'll highlight a couple in here, the annual crisis team meeting, I mentioned we would be meeting at our last meeting, so we did hold that meeting with Ranhtul Police Department, that's required by statute, so that has been done and forwarded on to the Regional Office of Education. The agreements with Promise Healthcare and Village of Ranhtul, I do not have the agreements with the Village of Ranhtul. We were looking at them today again, and there were some things we needed to clarify in our lease for the AT&amp;T building. 13E, but we are go at this point on the Promise Healthcare, moving into Central Office, so August 1st, Jenny Ferricks, Allison Didiger, and I will be moving out of our offices, and they will start setting up for immunizations and vaccine, immunizations and physicals in our office space. And by September 25th, we will be all out of Central Office, and then Promise Healthcare is gonna have some work to do, to get ready for them to be a regular medical clinic. 13E is the kindergarten early learning committee summary and proposal. Katie was on that committee, correct? And so was Diana, representing the board, and there was a recommendation to come out of that committee that we provide a teaching assistant in each of our kindergarten classrooms. So I'm informing the board that if the budget allows and we are able to staff, we will consider one teaching assistant for every kindergarten classroom. At this point, we are moving forward with one teaching assistant for every two classrooms, which is something that we can handle within the budget right now, as well as we're confident we can staff that. So we'll see how we go, how it goes. And so that came out of that committee. There was, there were other things, but that was the only thing we can secretly inform the board of this time. Anything else? Any questions on the other information items, I guess? Okay. New business. So as a reminder on new business, I sent out, we made that Google form, remember, and I just reshared it with Robin. Excuse me, boy, I'm a little on. And so the idea is that if you have a topic or something you wanna put on the agenda, you would fill that form out, and that would be the new business right now, and we would discuss that right now, as to whether we wanted it to be on the agenda in the future. With none at this time, we'll go to board superintendent comments. So I have a couple things I need to go over with the board. One is, and I did email about this, our next meeting is scheduled for July 20th. We can keep July 20th. I'm going to be on vacation and be joining remotely. So, or we can meet on July 27th and I will be here. Hannah prefers to do it on July 20th when I'm not here, so does, I just need to make sure we would have a quorum.
The 27th works better for me.
Okay.
Either works for me.
Okay, so we would have.
My wife's gonna be replaced on the 26th, I assume I can be there.
Okay, all right. And you can join virtually, if you cannot attend due to medical concern, so. All right, so I'll just confirm with the other board members that the 27th would work, so. That's the date of our centralized registration. So if you have kids in the district, you can swing over and register them and then come back, so. So that's good. The other thing that is on my desk that I need to talk about is the state government added to our to-do list by creating a requirement that we have a decennial committee on local government efficiency. My understanding of decennial means we have to have this committee every 10 years, I think that's what decennial means. And we have to form this committee by June 10th, which was five days ago. So as part of forming the committee, we need to have at least one member of the board willing to serve on the committee. The committee will meet at least three times. It can actually meet as part of a regular board meeting, so. But I need to name one board member to be the board's representative on the committee, and so the intent of the law is, is that we look at financial information about the district and try to identify areas where we could be more efficient with funds.
I could do it. That's what I do.
We can have more than one, I can't have more than two. Thank you.
I'll do two.
So Katie and Robin would be willing to do it? Okay.
Ladies, thank you.
All right, so technically our committee formed on June 10th, but we just haven't met yet. And I saw some news coverage of this, where every, every unit of government in the state is having to form one of these committees right now. We have 18 months to meet three times, okay? I think that's all I had for the superintendent comments portion. Are there any board member comments?
I hope there has to be one week.
Board members are signing the budget document that affirming their vote, that's what we're handing around right now?
I hope that, I volunteered field day, and I mean, we did field day when I was in school here years ago, and it's still just as fun, and like, the teachers work so hard, and yeah, I thought it was a really great event, I'm sure that other ones were just good, so. Goodness, I'm gonna jump all down on money, the kids lost a little bit, let's see what they say there.
They had the event on Saturday with the tournament of basketball, I thought that was really good. What Mr. Mayball is doing with the kids in basketball is really impressive.
At the junior high?
At the junior high.
I did wanna update, I forgot on our construction, what we have happening in the district, 'cause you can see it happening.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I'll start with the bad news. Fortunately, the doors have not come in, and so the new doors project is ready to go next summer. Or Russo will not be able to get those doors installed. They have to tear out every door frame, so we can't have kids in the building when we do that. The good news is, the parking lot and concrete project around Ader is moving forward, so you saw the new sidewalk out here, that will really clean things up around the back of the building especially. There is a playground, it sounds weird to say junior high playground project going in, but the, we've always called it the bullpen, probably was called bullpen when you were students there, and the area behind the annex gym, and we had some grant funds and planned with the junior high kids to really kinda make it a playground, outdoor space, not gym equipment, basketball court, there'll be like a turf soccer field area, and just more, some seating and things like that for the kids when they go out there for their lunchtime. We're also working on a project, Allison's gonna share more information on that, of putting in a handicapped accessible area at Northeast Playground, that'll be going this summer. The roof at East Lawn has run into some hiccups already as they've, that's a complete tear-off roof, so we're into our contingencies already because there is some, it appears that the last roofing company, whenever that would have been, may have done some work with some plywood that is not holding up correctly now that we're uncovering it, so we're gonna have to redo that. Just like the back parking lot, when we were redoing the drainage, found that the drainage was, the sewer drain and the storm drain were tied in together, and that's not supposed to happen, so we're having to undo that. So that's what happens when you dig up 50-year-old infrastructure. The work on the AT&amp;T building, the construction there for Rise is scheduled to begin Monday, so we're on schedule for everything at this point. The East Lawn roof should be done, no problem. We uncovered, you might know this, we uncovered old skylights.
Yeah.
In the front hallway there, so we're actually looking into what it might take to include some of those back in, so that we actually have some natural light in that area where they have the cafeteria, so. Some discoveries.
Board members, anybody comments? Katie?
Robin, had Robin?
Yours? Who else? Who else? Okay. Can I get somebody to say adjournment? If we'd like to make that motion, then we can just vote.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I don't know what the text says, but I will. I did that.
That's, that's it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye. Am I posing? No, look at the time. That is, that is, I think.
They are always this short, Robin. No, they're not.
You're very. Usually, usually it's agree.